Appreciate the kind of dedicated, empowered, excited professionals that we have working in Garden City. And I'm lucky to be part of this group. My job is to sort of summarize and bring together what you've heard tonight. There are several things that I hope you take away from this presentation. Number one, culture trumps strategy. The culture that's created is so important. And that culture really has several parts. It begins with the support of the administration, the Board of Education, all the way through the superintendent and down the line. And that's manifested in an empowered teaching staff. Grant did a great job talking about the dedicated professionals and trusting in them. But it also is manifested in the relationships between staff members and with students. Another important piece I hope you take away is the importance of data and data-driven decision-making within curriculum, instruction, assessment, as well as professional development. It all ties together and it becomes one connected piece. But probably most importantly, wherever you are, whatever circumstances you face, go at it with a positive attitude and a belief you can get it done. No excuses. That's what we're about in Garden City.
We believe.
So as you can see, it all comes down to teacher empowerment. Teachers have the tools that we need to foster a model school culture.
Assess teachers and students. Identify your weakest areas.
Define the norm that the status quo is acceptable.
Use data research to drive curriculum and instruction. We've come a long way, but we still have a long way to go. And that's okay, because every one of us has the talent, innovation, and perseverance to be successful.
And remember, it's not what you do, it's how you do it.
Ta-da! (applause)
Okay, as a board, we would like your feedback. This is still a work in progress. Everything is kind of coming together because we've got to present next Monday. We would like to hear what you have, maybe what you liked about it, what you think could do better. Fellas?
I'll ask you.
You might ask, given the past presentation of the board, recent conference on the Concorde, we implemented a handout and made sure there was material in their conference pack. I presume that's going to happen in this presentation.
You have a handout at your desk. You also, this PowerPoint has already been sent to the Model Schools Conference and it is online for all of the participants to review.
That they can download it and... Clearly, a lot of times, in preparation and starting the show, it's pretty exciting.
Yeah, I just appreciate all your hard work. I'm sure you weren't doing this every day, a lot after school, I'm sure, maybe even weekends. I appreciate the time representing Garden City. I know you all do well. Glad to say you're representing Garden City, so thank you.
It was a great presentation. I really enjoyed the enthusiasm. There was just one slide that was really small print that just as somebody sitting there reading it, it was way too small. And then, I'm not sure which one it was. And there was one person who maybe just read a slide that, you know, I would hope everyone who's there can reach, so...
Good point. So do you.
But it was great! There are a couple of videos that I thought were hard to hear. Interview type situation, but specifically the kindergarten screening interview was difficult to hear. Is the RACE program unique to Garden City? Or is that something that your audience is going to understand? Yes and no.
It's a strategy slightly tweaked for Garden City.
Okay.
We had to make some adjustments so that it would work pre-K through 12.
Okay. So everybody's going to know that?
It's...
Okay. I was surprised that I didn't hear the term "student achievement" more as the ultimate goal. Because, I mean, you lead right up to that, and that's really the exclamation point. That's why you do what you do, is for student achievement. I did hear a lot of "for the purpose of student success," that sort of thing. But I guess that just the term "student achievement" is what we look at when we assess something in a pilot program. Is it for the good of student achievement? Is this going in that direction? That sort of thing. So I guess I kind of wanted to hear that word or that phrase a little more as a goal. I was surprised, and maybe just because we've talked about so much lately here in these meetings, but one of the things that I think we're doing locally that is building our district closer to becoming a model district is our first grade readiness and second grade readiness programs and the rubric that we use. And I know we very briefly touched on that, but I think that that is really unique to our district. And I think that that's... I just want you to consider if you wanted to bring that up a little bit more on how, when we have 18, you know, learning centers, how do we make first grade here look like first grade over here, so that we start that funneling towards a single high school at an early age? Plus, it really helps with communication with our parents at the very beginning, which is part of the culture that we set. But just a suggestion, and maybe it's like I said, because we've just, we've talked about it so much here recently, but I think that's specific and something that I'm proud that our district does. But overall, I think you guys did phenomenal. Very exciting. I'm proud, proud to be part of the district that you guys teach in.
I did take some notes. I didn't realize you were going to ask for some comments. And I thought you did an outstanding job overall. I think it's a lot of information to put into whatever it was, 15 minutes or more. So I did have some comments, and you can take them for what it's worth, which is one viewer and not an expert on any of these things. But I guess it is a model schools conference. And so, to me, a model is something to be copied, but not necessarily something good to be copied. I assume "model" in this term is sort of meant to be a term of art, that if these are good schools to be emulated, is that the whole idea of this conference?
The conference, there will be 25 model schools there. They will be selected and shown. And each of those will have sessions. What we're trying to do is something a little bit different from all of those schools, and that is to become a model district. Because what is happening out there in nature wires, they have examples of model schools. But then, that's one school and maybe 20 schools in their district. Or one school and maybe 50 schools or 100 schools in their district. So we're trying to do something district-wide, systematically district-wide. But according to Bill Dagg, it hasn't been done. And we're a long ways from it. We're years from it. But I think we need to head this direction because last track I heard, last track I had is the district, the superintendent of Board of Education is responsible for 7,725 kids, not any more students.
Right. I guess what I was looking at is how to define "model." To me, like, there might be some thought of defining a model district or a model school has, you know, high student achievement, involved teachers and staff members, and however you want to define it, because that's really what you, I think, want to pass on to these other schools and other districts. So I guess that sort of what is the definition of "model" that we're using? The slides, to me, were very good and not very busy. I like that you integrated a lot of pictures for us who get easily distracted. It did seem a little, like, some of them, you could see parts of the one before and parts of the one after, and I didn't know if you meant to do that or not.
And that's a symptom of using that computer.
Oh, okay. Well, I just, I didn't know if that was sort of part of the overall style of the presentation or not.
It depends on...
Probably not.
I did like the "if you believe it, you can achieve it," Jesse Jackson kind of delivery and everybody's enthusiasm. I thought that was really good and it keeps the attention of the audience. So I hope that you can continue that after having probably given it so many times in practice. I think that's really a good way to keep the audience's attention. Data-driven, someone had mentioned that. To me, that means that we're going to use data to make our next decision about something. And I'm not sure that was what I got from whatever was said about it, because I didn't write all of that down, but that's kind of the way I would view data or how to effectively use data. There was also a walk to intervention that was mentioned, which I thought was a great program, but it wasn't very explained, at least from what I got. I would assume that's where the students walked to a different place for the appropriate intervention. I'm not sure if that's really correct, but if that's something that's an important part of the program, you might want to explain it a little bit. Somebody had mentioned a nine-month effort, which I thought was really kind of a timely amount of time. You could kind of tie in the "this is our baby" type thing, since that was kind of the right amount of time. And I do think it's good. I'm excited. I don't know if you'll be videotaping the actual presentation that we give. That would be kind of nice if we can do that and maybe come up with a website or something.
Best plan.
And we had also talked about maybe having, participating in the KASB convention that's coming up in December. And we want to kind of keep this in mind. Take it for a bit, it's work. How many people are you going to be speaking to? Do you have an idea? Hundreds?
There's, uh, I don't know. She knows it's going to be around 5,000 people at the conference.
Who knows?
We agreed that we could hold this meeting as five hundred. So we agree that we can have some heads and tails and we're talking to two sessions.
Are you comfortable with the signs?
Two sessions, one maybe once a week.
Are you comfortable with the signs? Because they appeared like they were in charge of you at times instead of your in charge of them. And I didn't know if you, if it would be better to have them like on a little stick, you know, and said, you know, "data," and you just hold it up. But I don't know if your audience can see that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
We're hoping that when we get actually to Florida, so we don't have to pack them, we'll put them on like something that's hard.
Okay.
Poster.
Yeah. It'd be easier if it was a little smaller, that you could just like, you know, string up, but you have to make sure that the audience can see it, so...
And, I mean, you guys can tell us, are they distracting, are they...
They were distracting to me, but I felt like they were distracting to you. Does that make sense?
It's fun, boys.
Well, there was one time when we had a sign over here, and I think there was supposed to be a sign over here, and, you know, I just... They're fun, and they're, they're part of the excitement and energy, which I don't lose it. I'm not saying get rid of the signs. They just looked like they were...
Sure.
Yeah, they're just cumbersome, so...
I think it might be different, too, in a, in a bad style.
Yeah, right.
Where the audience is so much more distant from you.
Yeah. That's why I asked that question first, because, you know, it might be very appropriate to be like a field leader or a cheerleader out there, going, you know, with your pom-poms and all that stuff. That's really what you're doing, right? You're cheering, yeah, so...
You know, that was a wardrobe suggestion.
Yeah, there you go, okay. And it all looked great.
Thank you. Tom, I'm sorry, I'm kind of going off of something that Jean said. On the data-driven part, I don't know. Part that seems disconnected from the culture versus strategy to a certain extent, when you're going to the robots, because you're talking all about, okay, we do this, we do this, and we test this, and we test this, but you're not talking about the kids. Because I think we've talked a lot about how we, and I know I've always asked this question when we've done the kindergarten readiness and the first grade readiness, you're looking at the kid, right? So it's not just all of the tests, that's a lot of it. So, but when you go to the robot picture, then it's almost like, well, you haven't brought it back to the kid. You're still in that, we're acting like robots thing. So, I mean, I think if you almost kind of swing it back a little bit and bring it back to the kid, that might help, too. I don't know, I don't know if I'm making sense there, but...
One of the ways, one of the places you can put that, when you talk about the differentiated instruction, spend a little more time, a little more on that. Because that is kind of right back to the chart.
And the student achievement piece. Because ultimately, that's what we, what we need to celebrate our success at, student achievement.
Sorry, I was talking about how on the video, it says from, I think it says from data to differentiation. I think that's really good, but it's just on a video. We could probably talk more about that there. When I saw it on the video, I said, "Ooh, I love that."
I especially like that you talked about the demographics of Garden City, because I think at first glance, there is a number of people who might sort of dismiss the relevance of Garden City's experience to their own, maybe in a different location, because they are in maybe a diverse area today, might think. But I think when you realize what our demographics are and how much life for even more advanced, I guess, than some of the major urban areas that might be going to this, maybe... I think it really puts Garden City, it makes it a very relevant model to pay attention to for other places. I saw that you noted where Garden City was in the state of Kansas, but judging from what I see on J-Walk and some television programs, you might want to start with the U.S. (inaudible). But I do think, you know, that's really what ties us to, you know, New York or Boston or the big urban areas is our demographics and differentiation.
I'm pretty disappointed with you, Dr. Carlin. There ought to be one more slide out there. If you want to be part of this team, call.
There you go!
I was just thinking, we need to send some flyers along with them.
Yeah. For the material.
I think we need a ticker tape, just in bottom.
More information.
Just amend this a little bit.
Oh, there you go.
Or for exploring the possibilities.
I'll be a part of it.
You did an awesome job. I was very impressed, because I remember when we set up and did our first run-through in front of the public, it was not nearly as fun. So, look forward to hearing back from your experiences down there. And I look forward to seeing the final copy. So, good luck.
And thank you for your honesty and candor. Appreciate that. As a special guest, I'm alive this week, and you can afford to attend the session next week. I enjoyed your Model Schools Conference last year, with your first student, 25 model schools. Garden City is more diverse in opinion and perspective than that. So, we were proud of our diversity and we embrace it, and we don't excuse anyone for the athlete. Thank you. That's what I'm saying. Which is behind us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No excuses. I love that! You guys have to know what happened. Laura just turned to Dr. and said, "I'm really sorry I came down." And he goes, "That's all right, no excuses."
Rachel wanted to start it then.
Excuses, I won't read it.
You're right.
Just the shirt.
I'm not doing that.
I want to do business, but we need to look at revising the meeting dates in July and...
Here's a typo. It should be July 14th and 28th. And I think originally, we had the 7th and the 21st. And the issue is just a bit of some material ready for that. That mean on the 7th will be a pretty tight timeline, and I think we can be better prepared for the information that needed at that meeting if we go to 14th and the 28th. Still have the two meetings. We'll just, we're just asking the board to move those dates back.
Questions or...
Need anything else?
Yes.
I'm going to revise the July Board of Education meeting dates to July 14th and 28th.
Twenty seconds. Questions? All those in favor? Those, thank you. Pilot, middle school cell phones.
I think both Brad Springsteen and Linda LaBorga are here tonight to talk to us about a proposal that they have presented to the administration that they'd like to see, so I'm going to let them share the details.
Thank you for the opportunity for us to come and speak with you. Earlier this spring, we were approached by Technology Department here at the ESC about looking at the cellphone policy, electronic device policy at the middle school level. High school, as you all know, changed their policy either a year ago or two years ago that opened up the use of the electronic device, obviously giving the iPad, but also allowing the students to use their cellphones. At the middle school level, we have stayed true to the policy that's been in place. And with that, technology continues to increase. We see it go across all poverty lines, and we also see teachers and students doing great things with technology. We have teachers that create QR codes that if we had a kid that could scan it on their phone, they could go home and do some things with that, whether that's in the library, whether that's reading their book off their phone, to using the phone as a tool with calculators in math class, to across the board. There's lots of different opportunities that could take place with that. We do see concerns with the policy, that there could be potential issues that come up with kids and how they use that. But I think we approach that no different than how we approach anything within our kids. We handle it on a case-by-case basis. We look at it, if it's a disruption to the teaching and learning environment, and then we make decisions for our...
One of the things that we did when the Technology Department started talking to us about, do we want to look at any changes, was we went and talked to our teachers and said, "Is there a use for this?" Many of our teachers would like that opportunity. It was hands-down at KH, I don't know about Course Good, but the teachers unanimously wanted to see more access for the cellphones. They didn't want to see they could just have it out anytime. There need to be some limits and some structures put in place. But they did want some opportunities to use them for classroom instruction.
And I would echo the same, same thing that happened at Course Good. And we communicated that immediately back and forth, and it was pretty unanimous as to what we were after. And what was put down as a, as a draft for potential policy was what the teachers came back and what they were requesting.
Our computer applications teacher also saw this as a wonderful opportunity to teach social media etiquette and what can be done with the phone appropriately, what shouldn't be done with the phone or any technology. Our students are brought up using these phones, and this is a way that they communicate and the way they get along in society, more so probably than I do or, you know, some adults. However, there are etiquette and there's rules for getting along, just like there are in society in time. And they need those instructions, because they're not always getting those. And this is a wonderful opportunity to kind of seize the moment and do that instruction piece at school.
I believe you were given the proposal for the task policy, which, under the consequences part, that's no different than what is already in the current handbook. The stuff that is above is very similar to what is seen in the Garden City High School handbook, with a few changes to what we think fits better at the middle school level.
Question?
I have a question. I'm sorry, I didn't, I read the policy, and then the board book post came out, but it did, Angela, I heard you talk to Mr. Springsteen with regard to this, and then looking at it more, I'm... It almost seemed, well, we have cellphone, it says cellphone policy, and we talk about cellphones. And then, under consequences, the first offense is that the wireless device is confiscated. So my question is, is this a cellphone policy, or should this be a wireless device policy? Because some parents, I mean, I don't, I'm still a few years away from it. I don't know if I'm going to allow my child to have a cellphone when they're in seventh grade. They've already got their iPads, though. So, you know, they might want to take that and still have the same ability to be able to research that they could with a cellphone. So, should this be a wireless device policy?
I think that's a great point. We don't see, the way we classify, we've ever dealt with the situation at the school, we deal with under electronic device. Because we do have kids bring their iPods, and kids use their iPods to text, whether whatever app they put on at home. Two kids bringing Kindles to read, to want to read on, and those kind of things. So, maybe younger kids bringing things that might be for gaming and that kind of stuff. But that, we classify it as electronic device. But you're right, it is a lot of wireless situation, what we're asking kids. But right now, we don't have that ability for kids to get on the wireless network.
And one of the things with the wireless device that I always caution parents is that very last line on the policy, that we're not liable if something happens to that. I don't know that they want to send an iPad to school. Of course, sometimes the phones cost as much as the iPads do now, but I do caution them on the cost of the device, if it's lost or stolen.
Two.
Several questions, Mr. Chairman. Listening to your presentation, it's a little bit different than what I'm reading in actual the policy. I could support teachers using a phone in their classroom. My question with that, though, is how does a teacher handle that when maybe one or five kids don't have a cellphone? How would a teacher use that process when not every kid in the classroom has a cellphone?
Not every student may have a phone, and not every student may have a phone with the same access. When our teachers have talked about doing those types of things, what they've done is they've set up group projects. And Brad's phone may access the internet, so he may be able to get information very quickly. My phone may take good pictures, so we're going to use my phone for, to take the pictures with. We may have a student there that doesn't have a phone. They may be able to use a laptop or an iPad that we have at school, so that we can put some, you know, a device in their hands to use, and so that we can kind of level that playing field and make everybody a part of that group.
Which I would say we do a lot of that right now with our technology. We might not have enough laptops on the cart, those into a room for every kid in the classroom, where we do partner kids up. No different than how our teachers collaborate on many other things. We do the same thing with technology now.
Again, reading the policy and talking to Dr. Carlin, he talked about students using it before school and during lunch and after school. And I guess that bothers me a little, because being a person from the past that's been in retail for 25 years, you know, we were always looking for kids that could talk to people. And to have a kid so engaged in their phones all the time, that, I know that's our society being connected all the time, but, you know, I don't, I would rather see kids talking to each other, reading books, drawing. books, drawing, doing more educational things. I vision them, most of them playing games on their cellphone, some kids will read or work on there, but my vision is, most of them are going to be playing games. They're not going to be calling anybody, because their friends are, are right next to them. During lunch, most of your lunches are 20 minutes, and I've been in those lunchrooms, and, and the kids are bouncing off the walls already as soon as they get done, to bother their neighbor, and I can see them, "Look at my, look at my game, look at my game, look how high score I got."
You're right.
And the other part, if, if we do develop this, I'm concerned about having five strikes before you're actually suspended from school. I, I don't want kids suspended from school. I'd rather say, second strike, you can't bring your phone to school no more. You know, if they can't follow rules, then they shouldn't have the privilege of every other kid being, bringing a, bringing their phone. I could support the taking the phone or iPod or iPad on field trips, because those trips are long. Dr. Carlin talked about them calling their parents as they get closer to home or almost home and come pick me up. I could support that, I, I'm just bothered where, we tell them, "Come to school," because Dr. Carlin said some of those kids are there an hour before school starts, and to be engaged on a phone for an hour, I, that bothers me. And again, I understand technology, that's the way we're going, but I see people in restaurants texting and talking on their phone while they're eating a meal with their friends, and it, I just, how important is that phone conversation? I just don't get it, so maybe I'm old school and, and I don't understand that, but those are concerns I have, but...
Well, and I would like to, to speak to that. That was one of the things that Brad and I initially discussed and cussed and disagreed on, and didn't put this in there. The teachers want the, the control to use it as a learning device in the classroom. That was something they originally asked for. I will tell you from my own personal opinion, the reason that I advocated for before school and lunch was because of parents. If I ran a, an informal survey and said, what was the one thing that I got the most complaint about from parents? It was, I tried all day long to text my child to let them know that their ride wasn't coming, or some, you know, instead of calling the office and giving them, so that we could give them a message. It was, you didn't let my son access the, their phone, they took it away from them in the gym, and school hadn't even started yet. And that was the, actually, my very last discipline referral that I had to deal with. We took a phone away from a child in the gym, and the mother said, "Do you know who he was calling?" And I said, "Yes, ma'am, I do, and we have a phone in the office, and he could have come in and called you. This is our policy, and we're following the policy." So that part, I kind of advocated for that because of the parent concerns that I've heard through the year. I certainly can live with either way, but that was one of the reasons and one of the discussion points that we had for that.
Well, and in the business world, and especially at the last retail hour that did serious for eight years, and employees were not allowed to use their phone from the time they stepped in our door until they left our store. And if we caught them on the phone just once, we, this would be one warning, second time, go block out and go find another job. Most businesses don't allow kids or employees to use their phone during the day, and I think that's the message we need to be sending to our students, is that you don't need this thing in your face 24/7, you know? Look around, smell the roses, talk to your friends, and learn from other people by having personal conversations, so that, that's just my feel on it. It's nothing against you guys, or the kids, or cellphones, or technology. Like I say, I'm probably old school, and I, you know, I always said I would never have a cellphone, and now I carry two of them. It's like, someday I'll probably have three, you know? But that's just the nature of the beast, and I would love to have our kids be more engaged in reading a book rather than playing games with their cellphones.
Couple things. KSB, does it have a policy guidance on this question?
Yeah, they have a legislative policy that you follow.
Although we currently have.
Ours is more patterned after Garden City, as part of the, probably revised that cellphone policy two hundred times since I've been here. But it's probably more Garden City's policy, but you'll see policies on cellphones in districts, like there's something like what we have to banning cellphones in a district.
And probably even on the other end of that is, your own device type of approach, where here's how you can connect your device to your district's technology network. I mean, you'll see those two ends, the banning it to, we'll connect you and everything.
At the high school, they cannot have cellphones.
At our high school, they can have, they can have cellphones anytime during the day, other than in class, unless the teachers give them permission for them.
Rumor I heard was, if they say no, do you go into the bathroom, then you ask, can I have permission to go turn my cellphone off? Apparently they have to go somewhere, supervise, turn the cellphone, pull the cellphone and turn it off or something. It just becomes another tool for, for whoever. That's just a sidebar. The other question I had, Mr. Chairman, is, is just sort of trying to understand the language here. What's the difference between class time and non-class time that's not addressed in law number one? In law number one, we have specific times. I guess there's a three-minute passing period, correct?
Correct.
And that's not class time, or that is class time?
That is not.
So they can catch up on the text?
No, they do not. Cannot use it during passing.
Does it say passing, or it doesn't say passing, it doesn't sound missing? That's why I'm asking. It says class time, and then you've got these other times, and it's saying about passing.
But it does in the first law, specifically state the times that the phone is made to use part of the school day during, during that question.
Yeah, but then it goes on and saying that it just probably could use clarification.
Yes?
I did have some comments. I am concerned about this proposal. I've had four children who've gone through the middle school, and none of them were allowed to have a cellphone in their possession at school. They didn't know of one either. And I have one coming up next year who will not be allowed to bring any sort of expensive electronic device to school. In my view, middle schoolers are pretty young, 11 to 12 to maybe 14 or 15 years old, and we are entrusting them or, you know, promoting them to bring something that may cost $300 or $400 to school. I think they may be too immature and too young to appreciate the ramifications of electronic contact. We've, we've seen on a number of occasions improper pictures, bullying of others, loss of the phones, theft, where students are, are stealing from one another. I think this proposed policy would excavate the divide between students who have cellphones and students who do not, for whatever reason. I think it places a burden, especially on parents who choose, for their own reasons, to not provide their middle school student with a cellphone for use at school. I think that our middle school staff has plenty to do in educating and supervising, motivating and disciplining students at the middle school age, which I believe is probably the most difficult age in the entire spectrum here, without adding an additional and fairly significant factor, which I believe will provide more distraction and disturbance at the middle school environment than otherwise currently exists. I do very strongly support the introduction of technology in the classroom environment at the middle school level and at lower grades, but I think this is a sort of a haphazard and disorganized and inappropriate way to accomplish it. Having some students, all with different cellphones, in a class, attempt to engage in a common project or effort doesn't seem to me to be an efficient or effective method of teaching. If the middle school staff believes that more access to technology is needed by students and teachers, I believe that we have other methods to accommodate this need. Some of the current iPads could be allocated to the middle school for their use. Middle school budgets could be reexamined to see whether there might be dollars that could be reallocated to technology or, or other methods. I don't believe sort of foisting this off on the student and their ultimate...